Okay. We're recording, right?
I think he's talking.
In accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to the Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical.
You're frozen, Greg.
... or other electronic means.
No, we may need you to read. I've had the same internet issue. I live right down the street from Rick. It's just not a good area this week.
So Rhonda, I don't have that document. You may need to actually read it in for us.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. You're on mute, Rhonda.
I couldn't, I already read it. You didn't hear me?
I think Greg made a motion.
I think Greg heard it. All right, I gotta do this, huh?
Yeah.
Assisting the Chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number (646) 876-9923 and webinar ID (949) 20934754, or by clicking on the following website address, which is listed on the agenda. Providing public notice of this necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, extension 103, or email reevans@saun21.org. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the Right to Know law. I will now take attendance. Greg Merrill? Greg Parrish? Greg Parrish?
You're on mute, Greg.
Present, family in and out.
Jason Farias?
Present and, it looks like I'm alone right now.
Bill Swayze?
Present and alone for now.
John Bailey?
Present with family in and out.
All right, attendance has been taken. It's all yours, Greg.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is any public comment on agenda items. Rhonda, I think if they raise their hand, then you go ahead and allow them to speak.
Yes, if everybody that's in the attendee section, if you want to provide a comment, just raise your hand through the Zoom app, and then that will bump you up to the top of the queue. I will see that. I will give you permission to speak. We just need you to state your name, your full name, and your address and your relationship with the school.
And I'd like, Bill, can I, we only do town residents here, right?
So we do town residents, and they should give a name and address, or we do people who are affiliated with the school, and they should state that affiliation.
Do we need to take a vote on that or okay that as a board, or is that just implied?
I don't know that. We've done it in all of our other meetings with our boards.
That being said, do any board members have any objections to those stipulations?
I do not. I do not.
Okay, Rhonda, thank you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Right now, I see one hand raised. It is Andrew Wallace. I'm going to allow him to talk, and if he could introduce himself, and I guess we know his full name.
Thank you, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Andrew Wallace. I'm the President of Seacoast Education Association. Thank you so much for the chance to address the board today, and thank you for your work on behalf of students and teachers in SAU 21 in these very difficult times. I'm here today to represent the thoughts and concerns of teachers regarding the upcoming school year. The first point I want to address is one that often gets overshadowed in all this, and that is how much we teachers and staff missed in-person teaching and learning and connecting with our students this past spring. As teachers, this profession is our passion. It's fun, it's rewarding, it's difficult, and it's inspiring. So for many reasons, we can't wait to get back to our classes and students. And this brings me to a very different point. The health and safety of our students, their families, this community, and of course, our fellow teachers, our custodial staff, our administrators, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, and everyone. Simply put, we are concerned about everyone's safety in the midst of an ongoing pandemic, and especially when we're considering putting several hundred to 1,000 people together in school buildings. This isn't a theoretical conversation. COVID is already in our schools in New Hampshire. Only a few days ago, Barrington reported a case of COVID-19 in their schools. Recent numbers in Massachusetts reveal upwards of 300 new COVID-19 cases each day on average, and the rate of transmission there is now up to 1.06, which indicates the virus is spreading again. Hampshire's rate of transmission is currently at 1.04 and is increasing as well. During these discussions, the pandemic's effect on children are often underreported. However, this virus does not just affect older community members. As of a week ago, Florida had reported more than 31,000 children ages 17 and under have had the coronavirus, and over 300 of them have been hospitalized. In that state, over the past few weeks, pediatric hospitalizations are up 23%, and the percentage of children infected in Florida is still over 10%. Five children unfortunately have died there, and just yesterday, a seven-year-old student died in Georgia. Numbers in schools in the South continue to climb. Even in the private school in North Carolina lauded by our Vice President recently for reopening, that was forced to close after a student tested positive. In addition to getting the virus, children can spread it, can spread the virus, as recent studies indicate that children as young as 10 can infect others in the same capacity that adults can. With all this in mind, the recent increase in COVID-19 cases means that Rockingham County needs to think differently about health and safety. And we are. We're meeting safely today on Zoom rather than meeting in person. It's a state of emergency after all. It's our job together to provide, excuse me, it's our job together to protect the lives and well-being of SAU 21 students, employees in this community. Our teachers, our nurses, our paraprofessionals, our counselors, our janitors, everyone, they need your consideration and they need your support in a politicized atmosphere where despite the debate, 160,000 Americans in this country have died. Everyone involved in education needs a safe environment in schools, if that's possible, and support for learning outside of schools when it isn't possible. As you've agreed, smallest possible cohort sizes, availability and consistent use of masks, PPE, social distancing, and proper ventilation are central in this endeavor. And if those numbers don't work in person, then schooling, excuse me, if those numbers don't work, then in-person schooling doesn't work, and we may eventually get to a place soon where the math doesn't work at all. Even with these safeguards, we need to say that SAU 21 employees' concerns are not matters of choice in returning to school. Many have serious health issues that require changes to their working environment so they can be successful, or they have children who attend other schools with different schedules, or they have family members with serious health conditions. There are a variety of reasons why they may not be returning to their classroom, and again, this is beyond their choice, but they all want to continue their practice and achieve the success that they've accomplished in the past. Remember, SAU 21 schools boast some of the best numbers in the state and are consistently ranked in the top 10 lists in New Hampshire. According to our most recent survey, 83% of 268 C teachers and staff, the vast majority of whom do not have a medical condition, have stated that they're very concerned about their health and their family's health. But they're all trying to make the adjustments so that they can teach and we can all be successful. These concerns about health are the same reasons that up to 33% of SAU 21 parents are keeping their children home in the fall, too. When you make decisions as a board, and we appreciate all that you do, let the health and safety of our students and staff continue to be your top priority in both word and deed. We teachers are looking forward to working with the students of SAU 21 again and sharing in those great times that we miss so much, and we're looking forward to being in the safest environment possible in the midst of a pandemic. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else, Rhonda?
I don't see anyone else over there.
Okay, that being said, I will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we'll move on to item number three, return to school in the planned school. Prior to Beth's presentation, I have a couple of things to say to this. First of all, if we could let Beth finish her presentation before we ask questions, I think it would help in the expediting of this presentation or process today. Also, two, keep in mind, this is going to be a presentation from like a 10,000-foot view. Enough information for us as board members to give us an opportunity to make a sound vote here at the end of this meeting, with a more detailed presentation coming next Tuesday at our regular board meeting. I don't know if any of the board members have any questions to either of these comments. None being asked or said, Beth, the floor is yours.
Hey, thank you, and thank you, Andrew Wallace. You know, I couldn't agree with you more. Health and safety of everyone is the top priority. When the task force and the joint board met the other night, it was recommended through survey results that Lincoln Ackerman returned to school. So when we found that out, we quickly put our heads together, even though we had been thinking about it all along, and how could we possibly do that within this building? So on a local level, I began to look at this building and actually the entire property, and how could we put a plan together that would be safe for everybody within the guidelines that the task force set forth and that Bill, Dr. Lupini, the other night outlined very succinctly. All of those things are one of the layers that comes before the development of this plan. So with that said, this plan is in multi-layers, which I will get into on Tuesday, and those layers are the facilities and how the facility will change, be cleaned, and all of those items through Allen LaJoy. The logistics of this, which I am going to get into with you today so that you can understand how it will work and begin to understand what the day in the life of a child will be like if we do return to school. Special education is another layer that Melissa McKeon will address on Tuesday, and also health wellness and how we will deal with COVID-19 in this building through our school nurse, who's been part of the task force and all of the meetings that our SAU nurses have met and actually put plans together. With that said, the logistical part of this was actually like playing dominoes. Every time one would stand up, four more would go down, so I'm sure you can imagine all of the little details that the task force gave us. How could I stay within those guardrails and still produce a day in the life of a child that would be productive, give us the connections we so desperately want, and also to begin their education again in person? We have the gift of space. We have space within the building. We also have space on our property, and I began to look at it as a whole. Inside the building, I am able to create three separate pods. I'm calling them now, Bill, I'm sorry. We went from team to pod, but three separate pods, and I'll explain what each one looks like to you, and with the numbers that go with it, if all children decided to return to school, which I know that will fluctuate. I'm also proposing a shorter day with masks on and the breaks that will be needed. We actually are proposing an 8:30 to 12:30 day, and that additional time would give teachers their prep time in lunchtime without adding additional staff. As you know, one of the big recommendations here is small cohort groups. To give you an example of what a pod would look like, and the reason that we're having pods in addition to the cohort groups is because each of the three pods will share a hallway, will share bathrooms, will share an entrance and an exit, potentially share a bus if we choose to go that route. So for example, in our elementary wing, if you can envision that, they have access to the red doors, and they also have access to the door at the end of the hallway, which is just outside here. K1 and 2, kindergarten has one section, although they're large, but they have two adults. Grade 1 has two section, and grade 2 has one section. That's a fairly large group of 19 students that I'll have to split into two. All of them would have their own space within the hallway, and once they are into the building, they go right into that area. Their set of bathrooms right there on the hallway would be dedicated to just them. There is no need for them to cross over into any other areas of the school. It could be self-contained. I also have spill-out area, meaning I have an additional room to split the kindergarten in two, and I also have access to the art room down at the end of the hallway so that small groups could break out into that space. In this model, the unified arts teachers will be dedicated to a specific pod, two or three people depending on the number. So for example, in the K12, if all children, if all families decided to send their children in these grades, we would have 59 students. Breaking it down among all those adults, I would have 12 children per group, just to give you an idea. Pod number two would be in the new wing. In the new wing, we would put grades 3, 4, and 5. That would require me to move two 6th grade classes out of there, and potentially even the music program out of the music room, which would give me a very large space to do some bigger groups if they so chose to do that, but also to do a breakout area because I could also split that in two for two additional spaces. Grades 3, 4, and 5 would have access to those two single bathrooms that are upstairs and downstairs in that new wing, but I actually don't think that would be enough for them. So I would also dedicate the bathrooms next to our science lab on the first floor. The other bathrooms around the corner near the art room, I would dedicate just to staff. The same concept would occur for pod number two in the new section. There is a door that goes right out to the playground. That would be their entrance and their exit. Also, I should add that each of the three pods would have their own fire drill space, all of the safety pieces that are in place. We're just going to rearrange, and I have an appointment with Jay Lord to do that next week. Pod number three would be grades 6, 7, and 8. They would be in the older part of the upstairs hallway, and they also would be able to come downstairs because I'll give them access to the hallway as you enter the front door, and I'll also give them access to the stairway on the other end. They are a larger group. I do think they need a little bit more movement, so they'll be coming up and down to the science lab and back, just in this hallway. They also have a breakout room in the STEM room. They also have the library. Additionally, I also have the cafeteria. That easily could be split into more additional spaces if I needed it for any reason. Also, the name of the game in this whole COVID thing is, everybody says outside is best, so we have really walked this property. Lowe's, the Lowe's in Seabrook reached out to me and donated a 12-by-12 gazebo that they are going to install probably next week or the week after, and we have a spot for that that I think would be a really great reading nook or a small group gathering outside with a roof over their head. Additionally, Jason Farias also represents the installation of our fabulous playground and outside area, and we've been in conversation for several weeks about five outside classroom spaces that would be available to all of our pods. I would do that probably on a sign-out basis, hopefully, but each group would get outside several times a day, and I realize I want to utilize that space that we have because we have ample property, but I also realize that it's at some point weather-dependent and probably would give us six weeks. We also have the Sugar Shack. That's down below. It's a small space, and I also have several picnic tables that I'm going to spread out throughout the area. Some of our special ed staff has mentioned that they might want to do small group, or they may want to do one-on-one reading or things of that nature that you could do in a picnic table in and around the property. I think that... Changes that I would need to make, obviously, this is adult-dependent. The UA rotation, the UA staff that we would dedicate to a specific pod would be in place for at least six weeks, so that that method of teaching their course would be consistent during that time, and then they would shift. What we're trying to do is minimize the amount of people that interact together in one specific pod. I would try to place, we do have a couple of unified arts courses, Spanish in our STEM course and things like that, that are more academically based, so I would also try to pair that with a physical education block and things like that so that our students get activity and things like that. But their programming, we will meet once we know what direction we're going in and be able to recreate how they approach their curriculum and what changes need to be made based on the restrictions that we have. If we do start the school year in school, I met with our leadership team. We've met several times now, and when they considered this plan, first of all, they were really, really enthusiastic about it. They added a lot of creativity to it. We would start our year off with what we already know, based on our time in remote learning, and we'd still bring that into our school day, so it would give us a head start specifically with the little ones. For example, we would start, we always start our day with the announcements. We would do that remotely, so that each class would turn on a computer. They'd have practice logging in, doing all those things, and we'd begin to establish those types of routines that we would like to carry into remote learning if and when we go back to that, which we probably, at some point, it's, it may be inevitable, hopefully not. Questions? I don't know how much you would like me to give you. I feel like I'm talking to a wall. Pardon me?
That's great.
Okay. What we would like to really, our goals specifically, if we could start the year this way, and it was, let's say we had a month in school, we would really focus on establishing a connection with the kids, getting into an academic rhythm, building a foundation, and also recreating our school day so that when we actually do go remote, that we remain connected as Lincoln Ackerman. We want our culture back. We want our spirit back. All those pieces of connections that we could do remotely during the school day here would give kids the practice and organization they would need if and when we go remote again, but also keep us connected. They get to know their teacher, all of the routines of that classroom, and I think more importantly, when they do go remote, that feeling of isolation that I know we all feel, whether we're a child or an adult, that they know that caring teacher and who that is on the other side. So those are all really important to us, and it's just helping us build a foundation, which is also the foundation of our SEL learning. As a staff, we are committed to, you know, really maintaining our school goals, not adding anything more, but maintaining what they already are, and that, we were already well underway with our SEL goals. We were already well underway, and it's going to serve us very well with our competency-based education because at this point, less is going to be more. And we also need to get better at remote learning, and we're dedicated to that, and I know that Zach Lemare has done quite a bit of work over the summer preparing for that. Questions?
So Greg, I have a couple of comments I want to add when Beth finishes.
Please feel free. Thank you.
So just a couple, so what Beth's tried to do is really lay out a great deal of detail here of where this conversation's headed for your school. I want to make a couple of comments that relate back to last Wednesday. So the length of day issue is an issue for us that's on the table in each one of our buildings. Beth's laid out a really good example of sort of this overall concept that we've been talking about, about ways of building and planning time, those kinds of things, by reducing the length of the day, and that is on the table everywhere where we're talking about K through 4 in a couple of schools or K through 8 in your school. We cannot forget that parents, and there were some small percentage of people who were interested in the Remote Learning Academy. Our plans are now approved in the other four districts, and so we can get to work on that Remote Learning Academy, which is going to be an experience across our schools. It will not be necessarily teachers at your building, but really a shared experience between parent, for parents who have chosen that option for their kids across the SAU, taught by teachers who we are able to bring into that, that experience and dedicate to that experience. This is all dependent on the real data. So one of the things that we will get to next week, that we're actually going to meet with principals about this afternoon, is getting something out so that people commit to coming back, right, or commit to the Remote Learning Academy, because we still have some numbers in terms of looking at room size, in terms of looking at number of desks that we have to work within, and if we can't work within those numbers, then we have to make alternative kinds of plans or modify the plan. And the thing I want to make sure I say everywhere, and this is my last meeting, so, is really that the one factor that we talked about a little bit the other night that I need to make sure we mention is our data around our employees and keeping them safe and the rights they have under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the rights they have under family medical leave, the rights they have under the COVID bill that was signed earlier this year that gives them rights with respect to their children and their needs. And I said it in the, I think it was in the paper today after Wednesday night's meeting, I think sort of an aha moment for SAUs across the state and certainly in our region is how interdependent we are. And I'm not sure everybody understood that as much as they do now. I've said in a number of our meetings that on Wednesday night, while we were sitting there discussing this plan, I had three additional emails from staff members, not from your building, but from other buildings, because the Raymond Public Schools went hybrid on Wednesday night, and that led to three more emails from employees saying, "I now may have an issue." North Hampton last night was very much in favor of this idea of looking at the idea of allowing employees to enroll their children in our schools as one additional accommodation that we might be able to offer for employees across the SAU in order to have them feel more comfortable coming back to work with those accommodations in place, but only where we have room in particular classrooms. So I just want to throw that out there. So I feel like I'm the asterisk on all these really wonderful ideas Beth's thrown out, but they are all dependent on some data points, many of which are yet to come over the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'd like to expand on something you just said, Bill, because I do support it. If we have the space and some of our staff would like to bring their K through 8 kids in to attend school here, and again, we can meet those needs, and I'm more than happy to have that discussion, if not agree to that. Just wanted to throw that out there.
There's some more work on that and bring it back to your meetings next week.
Sure, absolutely. Does anybody have any questions for Beth?
Yeah, I do. Beth, and Bill, and thank you, by the way, for the description. Bill, I want to speak to something you said earlier about the commitment of, for parents, and, but... and, but the lack of data at the same time, and how this is going to be a, you know, that you'll use that to drive, you know, the development. And I'm wondering if asking parents to commit to one plan or the other is appropriate. Well, I know some parents will, but do we, can we really ask our parents to commit to one of the other schemes at this point? Or is, can a parent and family be allowed to switch, say, for example, during the school year? You know, start out in school, and then they're not comfortable, so maybe the Remote Learning Academy is more appropriate? Is that, you know, just, can you speak to that?
Sure. There are, we've tried to create some crossover opportunities and all those kinds of things for that. We know that people are more able to make decisions as we're able to give them a more finite description of a model, right? So that's what we're trying to do now. But we realize, we absolutely know that we'll have people who say, "I want my child back in school," and as a third grader, and then say, because of factors in the community, because of factors in statewide data, because of factors that they see on the news, whatever it may be, may want to make those changes. And we're trying to make sure that they can, they can make those modifications, again, within reason. It's one of the, and I'm going to let David answer part of this, because it's one of the reasons that we're trying to make sure that every course has a technology component to it, is so there are lots of different options for kids who may have to be out of school for some time because of illness or whatever it may be. Do you want to?
Sure, yeah. So as Beth alluded, you know, the other active planning we're doing is, you know, the case where we have to jump to remote, right? So all of our classes need to have, even if they're face-to-face, they need to have a remote component or online component. And we need to do professional development, set expectations for those teachers, so that they know what's expected of them and the class, if we do have to jump into that scenario. So the question you're asking is nuanced, and it's going to be an individual academic decision, but we're trying to create those pathways as much as possible. That said, though, we are, you know, bound to planning and making sure we protect our section sizes with respect to the Remote Learning Academy and all the things you can imagine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any additional questions for Beth, David, Caroline, Bill?
Beth, awesome job.
Thank you.
You and your team.
So don't forget all the other layers. We will add all those layers to the plan on Tuesday evening, I'm sure. It'll be enough information for parents to make the best decision for their own child, their own family. And, you know, whatever way we go, we're going to make it work. You know, we have a very committed staff. We are all committed to really getting the LAS spirit and, you know, connectivity back. We know we went remote, and it was more of an emergency at that point, but like I said to Greg Parrish the other day, it's, I don't want to survive this. I really want to thrive within it, and I do believe we can, wherever we are.
Thank you, Beth, and everyone. It's really nice to hear a little bit more specifically about what you're thinking for a particular school. And I especially appreciate the attention to preparing the kids for the likely inevitability of going remote, so that they are, it's not quite as triaged as it was last time, to put it lightly. So it sounds as though, in your plan, with our student population and our staff population recognizing that both of those factors will probably decrease, that we should have sufficient space in rooms to keep students and staff safely distanced from each other when they're inside, if we keep the numbers at about 12 to 1 or so.
Right.
Or lower in smaller classrooms, I propose.
We, yeah, Alan and I were in classrooms, in several different types of classrooms yesterday. I also have the ability to move people into different types of spaces. Like I mentioned, the music room probably will not have children playing instruments or singing based on, you can't do those in masks very well. You know, so that's something that I'm working with Shannon Lundine to perhaps move outside on the stage that we have outside and do some, just do lessons, things like that. But we have ample space, and the outdoor space is priceless. I mean, I hit the jackpot with the new spaces that were built last year, and we've never been able to use it. So it's just timely. And I would encourage all groups to get outside at least once a day, because that's where children will get a mask break. That's where they're going to be able to move a little bit more. I mean, I have a whole list of ways families can help us out as well, and I'll go over that on Tuesday. But, you know, physical education and things like that, I am going to promote hula hoops and jump ropes and things like that, where kids can move but not necessarily be in contact with one another.
Thanks. And obviously, I'm a huge proponent of using our new space.
Yes.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. Yeah, it's priceless. You know, I do want to add that, just as a reflection of what the Hampton Falls community is and what it means to us. I had an email the other day from the pastor across the street at the church. His name is Grant Winness, for those of you who don't know him. But he, that's our evacuation space anyway, if we ever had to really leave the building. And he has room after room after room, all different sizes, and he offered all of those to us. I don't think I need it, but I mean, just the fact that he graciously reached out to us and said, "I want to support you," is just, you know, it's a reflection of this community.
Are there any additional questions for Beth? Thanks, Beth.
If I can point out one other thing, we've been very fortunate, particularly over the last number of weeks, to have the wise counsel of a couple of physicians who live in our communities. One of them, Dr. Mike Guedee, who is here at this meeting, is at his fifth meeting in the last two days. He has done this gauntlet with us and been in the audience in case there were any questions of him. And we, I can't express how much we appreciate these two individuals and their willingness to just give of their time to advise us on the issues that we're not qualified to answer but need help on. And they've been terrific and have committed to be, continue to be terrific in helping us look at these difficult issues.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anybody have any specific questions pertaining to that?
So the concept here is pods and three individual, separate schools that never cross paths.
And Beth, I know that you talked a lot about sort of reconnecting and engaging, and maybe you can speak quickly, because I see we have a lot of attendees, about more sort of academic instruction. I know there's a lot of variables in that, and it's a little to be determined, but thank you.
Yeah, we'll get more into that on Tuesday as well. But, you know, a return to instruction, when we have our teacher days before school starts, first of all, we are going to have to sort out the specific way we're going to gauge where the students in front of us are in terms of their learning. We know that there are probably some gaps, we're going to have to backtrack into last year's skills that they perhaps have not carried forward. So that's a given. After that, I, to be honest with you, competency-based education is incredibly important right now. And I feel as though we have been at it for a couple of years now. We have a lot of staff that are very, very good at it. And I think really getting at and identifying the essentials and going right at it is going to be the name of the game. But if we can set all of that up at the start of the year, when we do go remote, I do think less is going to be more this year. I know we always have way more to teach than we ever could before, but I haven't met with our staff yet, so I can get more specific with that once I do. And we can probably keep reporting out on that as we meet. It doesn't have to just be in August. It'll probably be September, October, and beyond.
Beth, are you planning on meeting with the staff before Tuesday's meeting? Just curious.
I'm going to meet with our leadership team.
Leadership team, okay.
The leadership team, just so you're aware, is actually an amazing team. We kept it intact this year from last year, and it's a really good working group. Each of them has a team leader that will represent one of these pods already, including special education, including our paraprofessionals. Melissa McKee and our special ed director is also part of that team. So it's very representative of our school. And they actually have, their voice will be heard within the presentation on Tuesday night.
Excellent.
Yeah. They're a great working group, so I'm lucky to have them. And then as we, once we know the direction that we're going in based on what we decide, and either way, we're going to be good at it, please know that, and we're going to put our, every ounce of effort into. But we will also add our school nurse to those meetings. We're going to add Alan LaJoy to those meetings, things like that, just so that we have all of the layers and everybody is on board with all of them.
Great, great.
Yeah, that's great to hear. I'm sorry, I'm monopolizing the mic here. Just so I'm clear, too. So this is really intended today as the initial summary and presentation of the plan. And Tuesday, we'll have the opportunity to understand your thoughts in much more detail. So we'll get a lot more information to answer to people, to the attendees on the line. You want more information, wait till Tuesday, it's coming.
Yeah. And I think, yeah, I also think today's meeting wasn't really fair for parents. It's noon time, and I think Tuesday evening, I know it's, you can't do it while they're working.
The purpose of today was really just out of Wednesday night to get approval of the plan, so that we can begin the work. Beth happened to start on that a little sooner with her leadership team and had, and is ahead on some aspects of this, because they knew what the plan that we were recommending was. And so we asked her to fold a little bit of that into today, but it was really intended as a much fuller discussion for Tuesday night.
Thanks, Bill.
Jill, if I can expand on that, I think after Tuesday's meeting, too, Beth really wants to start to reach out to the parents. And so some communication from Beth out to the parents are, it will probably start coming after Tuesday, if not shortly thereafter. And I think that's important. They have questions, and as much information we can get to them as soon as we can will benefit all of us. So I think that's kind of the plan. Well, to the board, Rhonda notified me that we have someone in the audience who has raised their hand with a question, and if the board doesn't object, I'd like to go ahead and take that question.
That's fine.
Yep, no objection.
So the person that has their hand raised, we're going to allow you to talk, but you need to identify yourself, because it just comes up as a device name. So when you identify yourself, just a reminder, provide your first and last name, your address, and your affiliation with the school. So you're coming up as Galaxy A50. We've given you permission to talk. I don't know whether you've raised your hand by mistake, or if you truly have something you want to say. Can you hear us?
You may be self-muted also.
Yeah, I've tried to unmute them a couple of times, and so maybe it was just a, not actually intended to raise their hand, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to disable the permission to talk.
Okay.
Greg, could I also add that on Tuesday evening, I may not have every answer, and if I don't, I'll just obviously be honest with you, but we'll take those questions. And when we go back to our leadership teams, can report out either through email to parents or that type of thing. You know, things are changing rapidly, we know that. We know that we could even, whatever we decide could change, but we just, we're not going to have every single answer.
Okay.
Greg, Bill, Beth, I have a question. Parents, I'm sure, a lot of thoughts, what, should they email anyone in particular with any questions or concerns? I'm sure you've been getting them already, Beth or Bill, but is that something you welcome now, or do you want to have folks just, you know, pause on that? Or I'm just curious, what are your thoughts?
I have fallen dramatically behind in the last three days.
You have, right.
But I was, as of Wednesday night, I was able to say I'd responded to every current email I'd received and actually phoned a few. That has fallen apart in the last three days, but we'll get back at that. But thank you, you know, any of us.
Jason, I would encourage parents to maybe hear Tuesday's presentation first. We probably will answer a lot. This will all be visual for them, so that they'll be able to see numbers. And I know this is probably a heart-wrenching decision for a lot of families, and I feel for that. But if they get a really good understanding of what this model would look like, then hopefully they can make an informed decision.
Yeah. The other part I would add to that is that, because we've encountered this in the other board meetings, there were a lot of questions that were answered in Wednesday's presentation. So that's up on our website at www.sau21.org. There's both the slide deck and then a presentation of the slide deck and even the board discussion about it, but that presentation, I think, answers a lot of questions.
Yep. And while we, as a board, don't have most of the answers, you know, people can email us. Our emails are online. We can certainly collect information and help, you know, get those questions answered during the meeting on Tuesday, if we don't have the answers.
Correct. Any additional questions from the board members for Beth, Bill, Caroline, David, or Matthew? Since there's no other questions, I guess we'll move to a vote. I will make a motion to accept the SU21's return-to-school plan for Lincoln Acreman School as presented. Can I get a second?
One second.
Rhonda, can we take a roll call?
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
I have the vote recorded.
Thank you. We have no other, we have no non-public issues to address or go into. The next item on the agenda is our next meeting dates. As you can see, our school board meeting is next Tuesday. For any participants that are here, just to reiterate, Beth will go into more detail of this plan next Tuesday, and please feel free to contact us with any questions, and we will do our best to answer them. If there's no other action items, Bill, I don't know if you have anything else. Can I get a?
I do not, sir.
You do not? Okay. Beth, do you have anything else?
I don't know, Bill. We have three more hours.
Who has three more hours?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you so much for listening. I'm looking forward to Tuesday.
Okay, since there's no more questions or comments, can I get a motion to adjourn? Any second? Jill got that? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great weekend, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.